I just want to welcome everyone to this information session from the South Westminster bids, along with Westminster City Council. We just wanted to um give an introduction about apprenticeships in hospitality. Today, so we wanted to share a bit of information. So we've got um apprenticeship training providers as well as Pearson, who do a lot with apprenticeships. And we'll also hear from Ally later on in the session about um about her experience as an apprentice itself. So that's very exciting. We'll just wait a few more minutes for maybe a couple of more people to come in. Um yeah, hopefully we have a have a good session today and kick off in a couple of minutes. Do a quick introduction of who I am. So I'm Rebecca Brooks. I'm from the South Westminster bids. Um so that's Victoria bid, Victoria Westminster, Whitehall and North Bank bid. So all four of us working in partnership together. I work as the CSR manager and also the inclusive economy lead. So we work through my um. So my work stream includes apprenticeship skills and employment for the bids areas. So um that's kind of why I'm leading today's session. But just to give a quick introduction for me, and if any, if any of the businesses um who get in touch today, or have been in today's session, want to get in touch with me about apprenticeships or employment or skills in any way, please feel free to do so. Um so yeah, if we if we kick off for this morning. So to give a little bit of background on to why we wanted to do this session today. Um with the pandemic and kind of also with Brexit, we've heard from many of our local hospitality businesses that they're one of their main priorities and one of the biggest struggles that they're facing at the moment is a lack of um employee um employees and the ability to get new employees. Um so we were looking at how we can kind of support with that. And one of the things that's kind of come to our attention is apprenticeships, and they're a really great way to get either newer new employees into the business or how to upskill your current employees. Um so whether and apprenticeships can often sometimes be thought of as more kind of vocational or more kind of workman, sort of doing plumbing or of gas engineering. But it can be in any sort of um field. So we can have management courses, you can have courses in hospitality, in the hospitality industry. And we wanted to to highlight that today. Um so and also with an additional um three thousand pounds worth of grant funding from the government for any business who takes on a new apprentice until the 30th of September. So we wanted to highlight that to to any businesses coming along today and making sure that you guys knew about that and just learning a little bit more about apprenticeships. Um to give a quick rundown of how um the session will go today. So we'll hear from Anne, um from Pearson about their experience um as an employer with apprentices and kind of what to expect when hiring apprentices. We'll then hear from two of our um employee um apprenticeship training providers, sorry. So we'll hear from Joe from Umbrella Training and then also Susan from Westminster Kingsway College. Um and finally, we'll hear from Ally from who works um at Pearson as an apprentice um about her experiences. Um we've also got Eileen here on the on the call with us today, and she's mentioned to me that um if any of the businesses ever wanted to do um a kind of an apprenticeships um kind of workshop session or um something more, a bit more one to one and learning about how the council are um supporting with apprenticeships. She's happy, she's happy to have a call on that. So please feel free, if you're interested further, to drop something in the chat. And um yeah, hopefully we'll have a we'll have a good session today. So just I'll um share my screen and if everyone could let me know whether they're able to see that. Can you see that? Brilliant. Right.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Rebecca. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this event. Um I've been asked to come along to talk to you about apprenticeships because I think it's probably fair to say I'm pretty steeped in them. I used to be an apprentice far, far too many years ago now to even think about that. Um but it's been something that I've been passionate about for numerous years. And the opportunity to come into Pearson and work and set up our apprenticeship programme, particularly with the advent of the levy, was just an opportunity that I just couldn't resist. So um I have actually worked with many employers and training providers in hospitality. I actually worked for a hospitality training provider myself many months ago. So it's nice to see some colleagues on the call. Um and so I'm here really to talk to you about apprenticeships generally. But if there's any questions, please fill them through to us as we go along. So a little bit about Pearson. Um you might know us particularly for our brand. Are you all right moving on, Rebecca, with the slides? There you go. Yeah, you might know us for BTEC um at Excel and the fact that we're involved in GCSEs and A levels in the UK. But what you might not know about us is that we're actually a FTSE 100 company. Um we're based in the UK. Our background stems all the way back to the 18th century, when I think we started off in construction, which is an interesting departure. Then I think we went into publishing and we went into media. And now we're sort of very much in the educational learning space. We are the world's learning, leading learning company. Um we're very much working in digital. Um we've got a new CEO that joined us last year. And what that's um given us the opportunity to do is to really move into um part of that educational market that is all about direct to consumer and learning in a way that's right for the individuals that want to learn. So very much more bite size, um working on stackable qualifications or modules and units. So it's really quite an interesting time. Um for us, because we're a global business, you can see there that, you know, over twenty thousand staff in nearly twenty two hundred countries, that gives us a fantastic opportunity um to move around the business, to move internally and promote promotion. Um and one of the things that certainly is a driver for us is the apprenticeship programme in the UK, but also apprentices around the world. You know, we've got apprentices in South Africa, we've got apprentices in the US, we've got interns all over the place as well. So for me, I find it really quite um encouraging, but also really interesting finding out how all these different apprenticeship programmes operate um and to pull together good practice, but most importantly, ensuring that the apprentices get a great experience, but of course are leading to business benefit as well. So I think next slide then, if that's all right. So a little bit about programme, moving on to next one, Rebecca, if you wouldn't mind. So just some headlines for you. So um generally speaking, we have about a hundred programme, sorry, a hundred apprentices on programme at any one time. Um since 2017, we've got about two hundred and forty there. I'm sure it's more than that now. Um and we've we've run an apprenticeship programme for many, many years actually before the levy came in. But the levy gave us an opportunity to resituate it right at the heart of workforce development. So I'm within our HR department and our HR now is very much aligned to all of our international business divisions. So that means that what we're doing is developing our internal workforce for the needs of the now, but of the future and of the needs of the different divisions and the way they interact with our customers. So it's about upskilling staff, yes, as Rebecca said earlier, but it's also about bringing in talent. And the joy that we're finding with the apprenticeships is that it's not always about young talent, it's literally all talent. Um it really does open the doors to anybody that's seeking a career. Because I think we've got about a thousand plus apprenticeship standards on offer now. And having that amount of um appropriate learning for different job roles just means then that you can offer to um candidates the opportunity to be trained whilst they're working and to gain a professionally recognised accreditation at the same time, which for many people is a real draw. It it really does become part of the package. So we've really used this now. Um and I would say we've we've got probably thirty plus different apprenticeship standards operating in the business, um ranging from level three customer services through to data protection, through to project management, through to cybersecurity, um level seven leadership management. So a real raft of different standards because that's what the business needs. Um and I think that's probably quite a big change really in the apprenticeship world. It's very much driven about what you as a business need to ensure that your workforce is equipped with what you need them to be able to do now and in the future. Uh I mean, it's really lovely to see our distinction level is so high, and that is considering the number of people that go through. Uh I think the thing that I'm always in awe of is the way the apprentices are able to hold down a busy job and do their apprenticeship and to really give the time and the commitment that they do. We give them twenty percent of of time off a week equivalent. They use that really effectively. You know, progress is pretty good, even though they're busy. Um and to come out with distinctions is just the cherry on top. We've had quite a number of our um chartered management degree apprentices this year get um firsts in their degree and then go on and get distinctions for their apprenticeship as well. Um it's not an easy programme. I think that's something to be recognised. Nothing is short term. I think the shortest programme is probably going to be about fifteen months regardless of of what set you're in. But the point is that they are getting a really strongly crafted, very well structured training programme with incredibly knowledgeable trainer assessors from training providers who come in and support. I'm working with over twenty different providers who are a mix of higher education institutions, independent training providers and FE colleges. Um and I have to say, even if some of them only have one apprentice, they're all incredibly committed to doing what's best for that individual apprentice and to working with us. You know, we have uh an apprenticeship team, which is not always the same with big employers. Um and we have a very set way of way we want to work and our providers have joined us knowing that. And what we end up with is a fantastic partnership. We're all in it together. Um if something goes off the ball, you know, if if an apprentice is struggling with anything, then we all work together to ensure that apprentices helped um and brought back online again at a time when it's appropriate for them. And that's the best way of doing it. You know, if you look at it as a partnership. Um and also line manager, I think, if they use it as a a method of development. Uh because you have got a really strong support package in your training provider and the line manager can get so much learning from it. You know, in terms of soft skill development, it's just an amazing opportunity. Um and certainly our managers have definitely benefited. Some have then gone on to do apprentices themselves. Um some are now doing the coaching apprenticeship. So it it becomes a bit of a role model um and it enables others to sort of learn about it and to think, oh, this is not the way I thought an apprenticeship worked. Um because they have changed. They are not what they used to be many years ago. They're open to anybody now over the age of sixteen. And providing the um apprentice that joins has got significant new learning with the standard that they're going to be joining on, then that is fine. And you know, there's eligibility, but it's it's really quite open to everybody. Um next slide then, if you wouldn't mind, Rebecca. And these are some of the partners that we work with in the business. And I'm showing you this because it just shows the um the way that we've managed to um broaden out our candidate pool. You know, I think like most big organisations and probably most organisations, we're very much thinking about equality, diversity and inclusion. Um and what we want to do is make sure that Pearson is a brand that people know. And I have to say, I think we've got a bit of a confused brand because people know us from a school perspective. They don't know us as an employer. And if and if they did know us as an employer, probably think all we do is recruit ex-teachers. We do a bit, but we have loads and loads of different jobs. Um I mean, one thing we've done just recently, we we signed the Armed Forces Covenant back in twenty eighteen. And we started to do some insight into Pearson sessions with people that are leaving services in the next couple of years. That's been amazing. You know, that's really opened us up to people who might have considered us but don't really know what we do and how we operate. Um we work with workingmums.co. Um I'm just looking at um menopause accreditation at the moment as well, because I get, I think that's incredibly important. We're doing a lot of work around that. Um we also work with quite a number of third sector organisations. So we work with obviously Westminster City Council. Um we also work very much around care leavers and with charities that support disadvantaged young people. And it's all about just encouraging people to be aspirational and to look at us as an employer. Um we actually employ uh apprentices on permanent contracts at the salary of the job. Um with a little bit taken off because it's a training role. So we don't do the apprenticeship minimum wage. We come in at that level because we want to show a commitment to the young person that's joining us. Um and that gives them an opportunity then to really get their feet under the table and to earn, you know, performance payments, to really feel like they're part of the business. And then within a year, if they wish to apply for another role, um providing they can finish off their apprenticeship in that other role, then they're more than welcome to actually apply and move into other roles within the business. Um and Ally is is a perfect example of somebody who's actually done that um on completion of her first apprenticeship. So um for us also, we're we're supporting other employers with their apprenticeships too. So we do something called Transfer of Funds, where we're allowed to transfer up to twenty five percent of our levy funds to other businesses. We're currently supporting about twelve different employers around the country who in turn have around forty apprentices who we are supporting in their apprenticeship. It's wonderful actually because we've created um a network of businesses who are now beginning to support each other. We introduce to them things like the incentives that Rebecca was talking about, Kickstart, for example, and other government programmes where maybe those small businesses wouldn't have had the opportunity to to really find out more about them and understand how straightforward it is in some cases. If it's not straightforward, then they can turn to us and we can help them out. So that's something we we're continually growing um and looking forward to doing more and more work with. And I think as as a big organisation in the sector that we are, it's part of our corporate social responsibility as well. So it aligns very nicely with the things that we want to do. Rebecca, how am I doing for time? Can't hear you.
There you go. You can hear me. You're doing well.
How much longer have I got?
Got another, oh, I've just gone, I think you forgot. You've got another five minutes.
Oh, that's perfect. So I don't want to o- overdo my bit. Um if anybody's got any questions, please put them in. And um I mean, I'm not looking at the chat, but I'm I'm sure somebody will. I mean, I think the benefits for us, and some of them I've I've outlined for you, but it is about really having a diverse workforce, encouraging our hiring managers to look at bringing in people that have got maybe an element of of work experience or maybe have got some exciting ideas, getting them away from hiring people from an academic qualification perspective, which, as you can imagine, for a business like us that's steeped in qualifications, is quite a tricky thing. Um but we are getting there. And I think one of the things that I'm particularly pleased of this year is our technology teams are really now asking about apprenticeships and wanting to bring in young people. And I say young because in that particular arena, we want that diversity of thought. We want people to come in with new and exciting views of things and and different ideas. And we also then want to train them up, both on the apprenticeship, but also on some of the systems that we use in the business as well. I think the other thing is that it's really um upskilled our managers. They are much better for actually having an apprentice. I think the other big thing that's happened is is a lack of siloing. Um as a big organisation, it's very easy to get into silos. And I think very easy through particularly the pandemic for people to feel very isolated. Um the apprenticeship programme enables us to support apprentices from across the whole of the business and even get them into introduced to apprentices that are working internationally. Um and you know, as much as it's not as good as seeing people um physically in a workspace, it's certainly helped them to feel like they're part of a community. So we have apprentice ambassadors, for example, that support others. They get involved in internal, external things. We're always um pointing out the benefits to apprentices of maybe becoming a young apprentice ambassador, getting involved in some external um promotional pieces to represent apprenticeships. And we do quite a lot of work actually with one of the liveries, the Worshipful Company of Stations and Newspapermakers. And our apprentices were the first in the country to benefit from resurrecting a centriold tradition of being banned and then being made free. And that's something that we've continued. So I think we're we're in our third year now and other employers are participating. And it's it's a big thing. Normally, we would be at the Guild Hall and it would look lovely, but we do it remotely. Um but it's still powerful and it gives them an opportunity to really engage with people that are at the very top of the profession and to create that professional network, which, to be honest, I don't think you can start too early. And I think that's about me. So thank you very much, Rebecca.
Brilliant. Thank you so much, Anne. Um we'll move on to Joe and Joe, I'll let you share your screen. We come out of this and then if you go into yours.
It would help if I unmute myself. And that was lovely. And and it really makes a difference to to, I suppose, all the other presenters because you've set such a beautiful example of what apprenticeships actually are when when they're working and and when the employer has looked at apprenticeship from a strategic point of view. So it's a great start. Uh and i- in many ways, it could be that that my presentation sort of uh overlaps a little bit, but I'll try and sort of skip the bits that Anne has so beautifully explained. So uh my name is Joe Simovic and and I come from Umbrella Training. Umbrella Training is a hospitality um apprenticeship provider. We are very proud to say that we have been um working in the last um six years uh in hospitality exclusively. It was only this year that we have started sort of working with a array of other organisations in um facilities, NHS, and we're mainly working on HR um and L and D qualifications. Um I'm the Chief Operating Officer, Umbrella Training, and my job is really looking after the quality and uh sort of operation side. But the reason why I put uh uh in the introduction that I'm actually an organisational developer and management consultant is because that's how we focus on apprenticeships. Apprenticeships are a vehicle to actually support um development of the organisation. So the idea is that we provide meaningful apprenticeships in programmes, other programmes as well that align to business strategies and business uh goals. So my my goal today really is to look at in many ways how to sort of develop and and fund um bespoke apprenticeships that are yours and yours only, something that is not off the shelf, something that is not someone else. It's something that aligns to your culture and your strategy um and use levy and levy transfers. I love the fact that Anne has mentioned that. It's something that is not utilised enough and I'll I'll mention that a little bit. I'm also going to talk to you about the art of subsidising your L and D budget with government funding, something that Rebecca mentioned. But you know, add a little bit of grant mixology and how to maximise it the most and put a number to it. So you get a bit of an incentive apart from the key business benefits in the terms of uh just money, uh uh how much you could actually earn into your L and D budget if you if you've got an apprentice in. And and I'm here to really raise awareness of how you can maximise the grants by actually building a strategy around it. And hopefully I can give you some case studies and examples that you can use as blueprints um or raise enough questions to to sort of think about apprenticeship in in apprenticeship in a different way. Now, at the sort of beginning of of pandemic or or sort of after the first lockdown, we did an extensive research of our business partners. We work with about eighty hospitality businesses across the country. Um mainly hotels, mainly five star market, but we have gone into four four star market. We have started working with a lot of restaurants and about eighty of business partners have completed semi-structured interviews as well as questionnaires. And we asked them, what is it that is going to be the key focus for your business? So it was like a mini organisational analysis. And what people were telling us is it's new operational processes, new customer journeys, flexible scheduling and how to to work through this PP and how to get to, how to work in. Remember, this was like after the first lockdown, just prior to the twenty first of twenty second or twenty first of June, when when we were first coming back last year and and tracking and testing and all that. That's that was what people were worrying about. And when they were talking about skilled development areas, they were talking about infection control and safe working, customer service and handling difficult situations in a new world, you know, the world where you're wearing masks or you're dealing with uh someone who who might not want to wear a mask, for example. Supervisory and line management skills and management skills in the new world and leadership skills in the new world. These were the skills development areas. So we thought about how do we approach this in the new new world? How do we align apprenticeships that we are building with the needs of our businesses? And in essence, we realised that the only way this is going to work is if we actually involve at every stage of our process of the design of an apprenticeship, HODs and senior management teams to to actually support the development of people's strategy. We realised that, you know, doing ad hoc uh training sessions in relation to some of these areas of skills development, it's not going to make a difference. Because unless we approach this in in a strategic manner and stop to think about what do we need to do in a year's time, in three years' time, in five years' time, despite despite your general manager doing only six months, you know, uh uh review of the revenue and everything else, we need to look at long term perspective. And and we realised that actually what we need to do is to sort of really utilise apprenticeships in a different way. So in case there is anyone on this this call that has never heard of of an apprenticeship before or is going to liken them to NVQs, I can tell you straight away, it's not an NVQ. If you worked with NVQs before, if you've done them before, everything you know about it, forget about it. It's not an apprenticeship. Twenty seventeen brought the nicest reform of apprenticeships that we've had in the past twenty five years. Yeah? The apprenticeships are, I'm going to use the word, the apprenticeships are sexy, they're interesting. They're like something that you used to pay for commercially. You know, those amazing Pearson's programmes that you would have or Edexcel programmes that you would have where you go on a three day management leadership course? It's that beautiful content in them, but with more support. It's completely different. So if you're thinking NVQs, it's not that, it's never going to be that, hopefully, fingers crossed. Because it's a structured development programme. It's connected to a specific job role. So if you are, for example, a team leader um in in a in a particular organisation and someone says, oh, you should go on a ops manager apprenticeship, you can't do that because it's not aspirational in that sense. It has to be connected to a role that you're doing at the moment and you are actually able to practise and connect the projects to that role, which is brilliant. But if you're someone who just got promoted into a team leader role, that would be a perfect moment for you to start an apprenticeship. So it's relevant for the business to put the right people in the right apprenticeship. It lasts at least twelve months. It has to be three hundred and seventy two days. Don't ask me why. I can talk about it, but I rather would not because I hate the whole compliance part of my job. It has to be, and and Anne mentioned this, it has to be at least eighty percent of new learning. So if you've got someone who's set in two years in the same role, imagine you've got a housekeeping supervisor, you know, has been there for two years, has been checking your rooms for two years. It is unlikely that there will be eighty percent of new learning. However, if that housekeeping supervisor doesn't have any understanding how to provide feedback and how to communicate, how to lead, even though they have spent that much time in the role, it could be that if they did a proper skills analysis, it still finds that they're suitable for the role. But you would have to jump through a lot of hoops to understand that that's that that eligibility is there. So there's still elements of eligibility and suitability in the terms of what you need to do. But if that housekeeping supervisor just started three days ago, they're definitely a perfect example of someone that you want to put on on an apprenticeship. Um I forgot about twenty percent of uh off the job training to mention here. This is a concept that is really interesting because some organisations, like Anne's, um assign twenty percent off the job training to complete that, you know, one day a week. Some organisations use something called seventy twenty ten model, when they actually integrate the projects and ensure that that twenty percent off the job training is done through potentially a slightly different model. So it it has to be something that works for your organisation and that that is sort of worked out um for you specifically. And what we mustn't forget, which I think is a massive benefit of an apprenticeship, there is a functional skills in English and maths that they have to do if they don't have the prior qualification at the appropriate level. So if it's a level two qualification, they need to complete a level one functional skills in English and maths, unless they have GCSEs or A levels. And if it's a level three and above, it's a level two functional skills in English and maths. Ideally, as a employer, you want this training to be integrated. You want, don't want it to be seen as something that is done off the cuff on the side or anything like that. You want beautiful case studies where people need to work out how to use better Excel and how to, you know, work out your revenue, you know, I don't know, ADR, your average daily rate quicker. And 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 that integrated into a discussion about how do you lead on that better rather than a functional skills session that someone leads for you. So it's something to think about. And then on top of that, we've we've used a word levy a lot of times. I don't know whether a lot of you know what levy is, how it works, but if we start with the basics, levy is something that you have to give away, whether you want it or not. Um so let's start with that. There is no debate about it. If you have an annual pay bill of more than three million pounds, um then you're looking at zero point five percent of that going into uh an apprenticeship levy. Your first fifteen K, if I can remember correctly, is actually, you know, free money. And and then the rest, it goes into a levy pot. If you don't use your levy pot, it expires within two years and it goes to government, which is what Anne doesn't want to happen because she wants reinvested into, you know, her potentially. which is what Anne doesn't want to happen because she wants reinvested into, you know, her potentially supplier chain. So there is a concept of levy gifting when some organizations that are going to lose the levy funds, transfer them over to those who potentially don't have it and don't have that opportunity to use it. And I'll come back to that in a second. And so how to make the apprenticeships work? And I think it's really important that you pick the right business partner to work with and the right consultant for the business. And to start with why in mind, just having apprentices, you know, I'm going to get some apprentices because there's a three-grant, you know, waiting for me, not worth it, don't do it, waste of time. You're going to spend more time fixing it and dealing with that than if you just don't do it. But if you start with why in mind, if you find out why do you want to use apprenticeships and how to use them to support any cultural shifts, for example, you know, these can be critical to train the skills that you need at the time. So for example, I have a couple of clients that are going through a massive cultural shift in the terms of how they perceive their organization. And they're doing a level-three mentor, learning mentor apprenticeship to support that happening in each one of their departments. And all the projects are connecting to the shift that they're having in their organization. And this is a huge thing. So you can design apprenticeships to actually be fit for purpose, not just long-term for the job role, but also short-term for specific initiatives that you have happening. So just to give you some case studies and some ideas as to how we, you know, how we work with apprenticeships, I picked specifically non- sort of London-based clients. So I'm not disclosing any information that I shouldn't be to competitors. But for example, Parkham Estates, which is one of our clients in hospitality, they have three outlets, three hospitality businesses in one area. They have twenty-four apprentices on two different programs and they have actually used the apprenticeships to embed the new clinical cleanliness programs. If I look at further, if I look at further, let me just go back a step. If I look at further, Limewood Group and Homegrown Hotels in Southwest, they have spent sixty-three thousand actually developing chefs. And so they've managed to earn eighteen thousand pounds on the grant, but at the same time, they have saved so much on their recruitment and they're not, you know, they're fully staffed in the busiest season because they've spent so much time building their chef academy. And Luxury Family Hotels were really lucky to benefit from eighty thousand pound levy transfer from a large catering organization. I am able to share the information. It was, I want to get this right, it was Compass in the levy transfer. And actually, they got also sort of four thousand pounds in grants for the new employees because they employed some of the sixteen-to-eighteen-year-olds as well. So they were really lucky. And year down the line, all of their supervisors are still in the business, twelve of them, and over seventy percent of them have been promoted. So that's an amazing return on the investment for that particular program. Royal Household has now added six new room attendants. We had a fully-designed pre-apprenticeship, like a little traineeship that led on to apprenticeship, kept all of them and got them into their fully sort of fledged room attendant positions. They don't call them that way in the Royal Household, but they're now all assigned to their palaces and working through. And we have just started another seven with them. So that's amazing stories to share where it has really worked, the apprenticeships are really working. Now, if you think of how do you fund apprenticeships and how do you make this happen? If you are a levy payer, I would say really focus on utilizing your levy. But some people say to me, come to me and say, right, I've got enough in the levy for three apprentices. I was like, okay, but what do you actually need? So we start with the organizational analysis and we find out that actually there's ten of their supervisors or team leaders that need development. What we then do is look at how we can support them through what Anne was saying, that is levy gifting. So we use London Progression Collaboration, which is based in London. It was a think tank designed by GLA and Mayor of London. And they have over one point two million pounds available to actually share with London businesses in actually topping up your levy. So if you're thinking what to do and you don't have a connection with an amazing organization like Anne's, then you could be going down to LPC and organizing that transfer. If you're a non-levy business and you're not in the mood of sort of making that connection and getting the levy transfers, you can also reserve a non-levy funding through your own DAS account. DAS account is Digital Apprenticeship Service Account. And you can reserve up to ten places. And we also have a project called Boost Hospitality, which is the, I'm just going to click through a couple of slides so I can show you that. Boost Hospitality is ESF, European Social Fund, project where we actually can support you with some apprenticeship design. We can support you with some free training in the terms of leadership development, customer service development. And this is solidly for London businesses. So this is a good platform to actually talk about this. If you're a London business that earns, in the last year, has earned less than forty-three million euros, which a lot of London businesses are, and if you're an SME, which means that you're under two hundred and forty-nine employees, this is something that might be of real interest to you. So this Boost Hospitality initiative comes with doing a full-blown organizational needs analysis, supporting you with your apprenticeships, but also potentially supporting you. And I'm going to flick back to a couple of slides, if that's okay with you, with your Kickstarter scheme. So Eileen, before this call, mentioned that she's a lucky owner or supporter of many Kickstarters. And that's amazing to hear. It's a great initiative. And if you haven't jumped on board, you really should. It has taken a little bit of time for DWP to work out how to get people over to us. But again, you know, there's a lot of positives in getting someone from a Kickstarter scheme because if you actually look into how to mix things up and how to make this really work for you, you could have someone on a Kickstarter scheme for six months and have that bespoke made for you and train them into employability skills, train them into your organization. And then you can complete their Kickstarter scheme, move them on to a bespoke apprenticeship for you that can last at least twelve months, as you know. And within that, you could be actually sort of getting into your L and D budget, three and a half thousand pounds. Well, no, it's more now because I built this slide when the grant was less than this. So there's fifteen hundred pounds grant for Kickstarter and three thousand pounds grant for the apprenticeship. That could be four and a half thousand pounds going towards your L and D budget. And in the terms of wages, if you employ a Kickstarter, you get the first six months where you can earn between two thousand seven hundred and thirty pounds and four thousand nine hundred and twenty pounds for the wages of that Kickstarter. So even if you haven't heard anything that I've said before about all the lovely benefits of the bespoke apprenticeships and actually building it to your specification and getting all of those amazing benefits that Anne was saying. And if I put that slide in front of you, there is a value, financial value, straight away behind the apprenticeships. But in essence, if we are being really, really, you know, clear as to why you should be doing this, you should be doing it because it's cost-saving, it's budget-boosting, and it makes a difference to your organizational development. Because ultimately, by doing this, you could be adding value to what you're doing day in, day out. You could be looking at a return investment that is far greater than just doing what you have been doing before, which is the, you know, internal training programs. And if you invest in the right apprenticeship that goes along with the projects that you have on board, it can make a real difference to your business and how your business is doing. So I think if you're thinking about how do you move forward with this and how do you actually implement this into your strategy? I think search for the sources of funding. It seems like, you know, Eileen and her team and Rebecca's team, you know, they're doing an amazing job in giving you opportunities to hear about these. You know, find resources that are free, that you can utilize them and use them wisely. Be part of a network like this, but also build those strategic alliances with business partners. I mean, Anne seems to be, you know, Pearson seems to be sharing their funds in hospitality. Compass, Sedexo and NAC and Co. are part of Umbrella Community and they're sharing and gifting their funds, that's for sure. LPC, London Progression Collaboration, is a think tank that is doing this actively in London. So, you know, it will make a difference because you might hear more information and get more funds. And if anything, sort of involve your HODs if you get to a point, when you get to a point in designing your apprenticeships. And make sure that you design them. Don't just pick them off the shelf because they can make a difference day to day in your operations and they should be yours rather than anyone else's. So be bold, be creative in the design of your apprenticeships with your apprenticeship provider and be commercially savvy because they can make a difference for the return on the investment, especially through the business projects because your people could be bringing you business projects that make a difference. There we go.
Amazing. Thanks so much, Jo.
No worries. That was like put a penny in and see how quickly I can talk.
That was brilliant. Thank you. Susan, if I share my screen again and we go on to you.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Lovely. Thank you. I think, I don't know if I'm going to be able to keep up with Anne and Jo in terms of length of information. But just as a brief introduction, my name is Susan Milbank. I'm the Client Development Manager for the School of Hospitality at Westminster Kingsway College. So all of the, I mean, there's going to be overlap, but I think a lot of what we provide has been covered already. Westminster Kingsway College has been on, we've had a school of hospitality on the site in Victoria, I think for the last hundred and fifteen years. So we certainly have been around for a while and we have a lot of our alumni in the industry at the moment, specifically with the chef and catering students and graduates. So next slide, please, Rebecca. I feel like Professor Chris Witty. Oh, so we, the world-renowned Historic Hospitality Culinary Arts Training Profession, as I've just said, our facilities are, we are incredibly fortunate and there's not a day that goes by where we are not grateful for what we do have available in terms of teaching facilities, our kitchens, our science labs, chocolate laboratories. We've got a new gastronomic, molecular gastronomy laboratory, some science labs. So we really do have the facilities to give all-round training within the hospitality sector. Our lecturers have all had time in the industry. So every single chef lecturer or front-of-house lecturer or assessor has actually worked in the industry previously. So that is something that we're very proud of. We are under Ofsted Grade One Provision for our School of Hospitality and that we do like to hopefully keep. We've got fantastic industry relationships. As I said, a lot of our alumni has now moved on or now taking on apprentices themselves. In fact, only last week did I have a call from an apprentice who graduated four years ago looking to take on an apprentice with her new business. So, you know, we do keep feeding into the industry as well as supporting the students that have passed through us. Our relationships with the Royal Academy of Culinary Arts currently this week have actually been very much focused on the recruitment for the RAC programs. Craft Guild of Chefs, Worshipful Company of Cooks Group, somebody spoke about delivery, was it Anne? And those Guild Hall dinners. We have the catering side of stuff, the hospitality side of stuff, we've been involved and many of our students have been involved in those dinners as well, preparing the food and serving. Next slide, please, Rebecca. So that's who we are. In terms of what standards we're delivering at the moment, they're on screen. Majority or the predominant apprenticeship standards we are delivering are the commis chef and the chef de partie. We do have hospitality team member and hospitality supervisor, which is the equivalent level-two, level-three in front-of-house qualifications. However, the majority of the courses that all students that we recruit and are involved in the delivery of is the commis chef and chef de partie at the moment. There is an insatiable demand for them. Right, thank you. Next one, Rebecca, please. Okay, in terms of how we support you as a training provider for an employer, we can go through very, very briefly, as most of stuff has, as I said, has been covered in terms of the levies and things like that. Thank you for sorting that out, Jo, that saved me a task. Pretty much, we have a client development manager, myself or one of my colleagues, would speak to you directly. We would go through the entire process in terms of how we can support in recruiting in partnership with you. We don't place students in positions. We have many students that make application to the college. I recruit employers who are looking to take on apprentices and basically we introduce the two. I feel, and this is slightly off the screen, but I do feel that people don't place a value in something they've been given for free. So I need our students and our apprentices to make application and to earn the job as opposed to just receive the job on a silver platter. Having said that, I mean, there's various reasons why we do that, but from the time that apprenticeships and the investment in an apprentice changed from a government-sponsored or government-funded qualification to now an employer contribution or levy of the chef qualifications in the region of eight or nine thousand pounds. When you add that figure to the apprenticeship to the employer, suddenly it becomes a, oh, I need to listen up here because you are investing, you are part of that process, you need to be involved in that recruitment because one month with the wrong person in the job is too long. And you are signing up to fifteen-month program where you are supporting an employee into this program. So this is obviously taking new recruits as opposed to upskilling existing staff members. You need to make sure you're getting the right person. And the only person that can be involved in that is you as an employer. You know, I can send twenty students across for interviews, trial shifts. Unless they fit your business, it's not going to work. So you are involved in that, but we do do a part of the selection process. We do a screening, we give the student the information. We let them make the application directly to you because their commute, their job, they're going to want to wake up in the morning and go to work. So and they need to be involved in it, they need to claim ownership for it because if, you know, if we get a student that's been placed somewhere, doesn't quite like the job they're doing, very quick for them to walk away if they haven't made an effort to get it. So being involved in that process is very much a, it certainly has shown for us that it is the right thing for us to do is to get the student earning the job as such. Dedicated apprenticeship team, we have a department. Unfortunately, I'm only, I'm alone in the office today because everybody's on their summer break because it's college or they're working from home. We're still on a rotation basis, office-based, but there is somebody available Monday to Friday. The delivery model for the chef qualifications predominantly are day release. So come into the kitchen one day a week, work in the workplace for up to four days a week, depending on the rotor, et cetera. They have a practical session, they have a theory class, they have functional skills, as Jo mentioned as well. But that, or Anne mentioned as well, we do incorporate that from the beginning. So that's not an add-on or it is part of the program right from the beginning. Every six to eight weeks, we have progress reviews where we have a dedicated reviews officer either going out to the industry if subject to COVID restrictions or actually doing it telephonically or remotely via video call or email to do a six-to-eight-week progress review with the learner, the employer and the college. And that, we've just listed some of the employers that we're dealing with at the moment and historically and going forward. So we have a lot of job offers at the moment. And if anybody's wanting to offer any more, you're very welcome to get back in touch and we can see if we can assist in any way. Next slide, please. I think that's it. Oh, yes, any questions? So if anybody does have any questions for me, my contact details, I think, are on the next slide along with my colleague Sharon Berry, who is actually our Head of Apprenticeships, but is on annual leave at the moment, and that's why you got me instead. Please do give us a call or send an email, drop us a line and we will do what we can to help.
Brilliant. Thanks so much.
And that's me. Done.
Brilliant. Great. It's very nice and short and sweet. That's how we like it. So yeah, if we now move on to Ally, if you just want to give us kind of a quick overview of the benefits that you've seen as an apprentice yourself and kind of how that journey has worked for you.
Yes, so I joined Pearson in twenty nineteen when I was nineteen. So I'd done A-levels in sixth form, didn't do too great and just found out that I looked at unis and it just wasn't for me. Like I wanted to go in and do something practical. So I worked with a hospitality company initially and then joined Pearson as a customer success. Um, so I worked with a hospitality company uh initially and then joined Pearson as a customer success consultant, which is essentially an account manager. So uh my role was to look after all of primary schools in Wales and the southwest of England and support them with their digital solutions for primary resources, print resources, and just make sure that we're using them effectively. Um, I did that until August twenty twenty and I was still doing my level three sales apprenticeship at the time. I moved over to Harrow School Online and Pearson Online Academy, which Pearson's first virtual online schools in the UK. Um, so that was basically dealing with international families and helping them and supporting them in finding a solution for their child if they wanted to do online A levels and GCSEs. Um, I, during that role, I finished my level three and I've started to do the Chartered Management Degree Apprenticeship. So I started that in January. Um, as Anne had, did say, we're more than happy, like the team are more than happy for us to move job roles as long as it still applies. Um, so when I started that apprenticeship, my my intentions were to become one of the seniors, you get enrollment advisors, which had management qualities within that role. Um, but a job role for Customer Success Manager actually came up in April and I interviewed and I got the role. Um, so that's what I'm doing now. So I'm managing a team of eight people um doing the job role that I was doing alongside my degree apprenticeship, which is challenging to say the least, but definitely a hundred percent worth it. Um, Pearson for apprentices, the support that we get from our training providers, Anne Pearson is is absolutely amazing. And I definitely say doing an apprenticeship is the right way forward. I I'm able to apply the skills I learn live in my job role. I mean, recently, um I've been learning about Excel and data analysis in my modules and I've been able to apply that and doing projects in my job role. Um, so that's my short and sweet, this is where I came from, do apprenticeships, speech.
Brilliant. No, that's amazing. I was gonna say, that's so, that's so great that you've like so quickly been able to kind of move along and uh like Anne was saying, and you said that like the fact that you were able to change job roles and kind of progress and get promotions and things like that and manage people, but still be a, be an apprentice and kind of continue on with that. I think, I think that's really great and um really great to highlight those, those things that those opportunities are available to.
Yeah, I just, I forgot as well because I know Anne mentioned it's useful for managers. I actually manage three apprentices, so I hundred percent agree with that. It's also really useful for my development to manage the apprentices as well because actually they tell me what they learn and then I steal that and apply that to my apprenticeship and my job, so.
I was gonna say, it's always good, but I think that's great. Um, as I say, I don't think I've seen any questions come in. Um, I'll have a quick look at, no, there's nothing in the Q and A and I haven't seen anything in the chat. But if anyone, if anyone, um any of the attendees have any questions, please feel free, we've got a couple of minutes.